Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Item one A, roll call of possible action on the excusing of any absent member of the governing body.
Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez.
President.
Commissioner Elieazar Wajardo.
President.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero. Commissioner Daniel Chavez. Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
President.
Commissioner Itza Flores.
Present.
We do have a quorum. Also, Commissioner Chavez's advice if he could be excused. Wasn't going to be able to make it.
Motion for excuse.
Motion to excuse absent members?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the pass their excuse.
Thank you. Item one B, Pledge of Allegiance and Evocation by Luis.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work and the intelligence to make the right decisions. Amen.
All right, moving on. Item number two, public testimony. Emelda, anybody sign up?
I have John E. Cavell who signed up. He, yes, he is.
Great.
He's speaking on consent item number five A one.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor and distinguished commissioners, I come here as a resident of Southgate and as with the experience of a civil engineer technician on road building. I will build roads, help build roads, hundreds of hundreds, if not thousands of miles of road in southeast Georgia. I have the pleasure of being in Southgate because I go out there and watch them build Moore Road. And I see them building and I am thrilled because I get the, I get the smell asphalt. I love the smell of asphalt. But I also lived in fear as I saw them put down the base for Moore Road. The base of Moore Road that they put down is lime and dirt. Lime and dirt is not enough for that road. Lime and dirt in, in most state roads is only for where they post the guardrails. It's not good for any lane of traffic. And I don't have a minute and a half to do this and I don't think it's enough, but it, the lime and sand is the only, is so useless for that road that you're going to have more problems with it than anything else. It's, it's the weakest link in your, in your road building. The base is the, is supposed to be the strongest and, and, and take care of the upper layers of, of road. You can tell by the repairs already done on Moore Road that it's not good enough. And when it comes to that intersection of Cage, I would recommend that the civil engineers for City of Five far drew drill cores on Moore Road and on Cage, I mean on, on Cage and Moore Road, compare those, those cores because you're going to find the cores on the state route of two eighty-one are strong enough for incoming and outgoing traffic to that Circle K. Circle K is going to sell diesel. You're going to have over the road truckers going in and out of there and in and out on Moore. And Moore will not handle over the road trucking and traffic at that, with that base. I would, I would ask that you defer this until civil engineers check and compare cores.
Well, the good news is that we're about to do Moore Road, brand new. And the bad news is I, I'm glad you're educated because I don't know what you're talking about. This lime and sand. So I'm glad you're here. Omar, can you enlighten us and?
Actually, we did have a geotechnical engineer study the, that they do cores of the soil and they do recommend lime to stabilize the the subgrade. What happens is when the clays are too fat and they get moisture, the, the clay's expanding, contract with water. So the lime creates a seal to prevent the water infiltrating into that clay layer and prevents it from expanding and contracting. So Tex- dot uses lime. It's a, it's a proven mitigation for these fat clays that we call, so we did get a-
Is that what we did on Moore Road?
Yes, we did get a report from the geotechnical engineers and they recommend like a three to five percent lime. So it is a proven methodology.
And where on our MPO list? Because I forget, we have so many. Where is Moore Road?
Moore Road is, I believe, twenty twenty-eight.
Okay, that's one of the projects we're going, when we say accelerate, meaning we're going to move it up.
Yes, we're going to, we're going to be moving it up.
Moving it up.
Yes.
Yeah.
Until then, you're, until then, it's going to be expensive for the city.
Sure. But thank you for the commentary and thank you for the education. And when we build something, it'll be top notch approved by Tex- dot. Obviously, that's who does it in Texas. And, but we do plan to have a three-way, I mean, a three-lane road and sidewalks. And from Jackson all the way to I Road because that whole thing needs to be redone. It's, we've had enough with the patchwork and stuff. And especially irrespective of whatever gets developed, the issue is that we need a new road there already. So you will be seeing it in your lifetime.
And I know that you drive that road. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Are you melding? Anybody else sign up?
Yes, sir. Ms. Lynn Arnold, she's also here, also signed up for consent agenda item five A one.
Okay.
As a resident of Southgate, I have several concerns that were not discussed or addressed by staff at the Planning and Zoning Commission on June fourteenth. This location has heavy traffic. Have traffic studies been done? How is the traffic going to be managed with something like a Circle K there? Where will the ingress and egress for Circle K be? How many residents will be impacted? Moore Road has many subdivisions now. It also has become a major cross street since the city repaved the last time. When the school year is in session, we get a lot of extra traffic, which it'll be vanguard now. We have no drainage, no curb and gutter. The ditches flood when it rains. Cage is already heavily congested. There's poor law enforcement for cars with loud exhaust. You can hear them racing their engines, squealing their tires, racing from light to light. Our wall has been hit twice, our privacy wall. Circle K will bring more twenty-four hour bright lights and noise. We already have a lot of that. Southgate has been here for more than thirty years. And I'm concerned why there isn't more consideration being given to us. We're going to be right there across the street from it. And I would like for the city to consider rezoning with a less intrusive-
Your time is up, Ms. Arnold.
Office professional or something like that.
Thank you, ma'am. I mean, you melded anybody else sign up?
Just to clarify a couple of things. There, if, when we upgrade Moore Road, it's not intended to be used by semis, even including diesel trucks or, that's not what it's intended. It's for automobiles. So whatever egress, ingress they need has to be off Kate Street. It won't be off Moore Road, just, just to start off with. I'm, I believe you. I've just never seen it, but that's not the intent of that. And second of all, the curb and gutter will come with it when we do the new road. That's, that's why we need the whole brand new road. The noise speeding is throughout the city, but after our broadband project is completed in a year's time, the public was going to find out then, but we'll tell you now, we're putting cameras and we have a lot of, you know, young people, right? That's, it's, every city does and we're all, we're, we all used to be there and we tend to act a little silly, but people are going to be getting their notices in the mail for speeding at two in the morning or two in the afternoon. It won't matter because we don't want that in our city. We can certainly put speed bombs and a bunch of balls and all over our roads, but after a while, it gets a little annoying for people and we understand that. So I think a better way of doing that is the way we do it up north and where we have our toll roads. We just take a picture of people, whatever they're doing, and if they're being inappropriate, they're going to get cited without the police being there and they have to deal with it. And this is going to be through all major intersections, including Moore Road. So that's coming and the broadband project should be done in a year's time. So it's not pie in the sky. It'll be done in twelve months and we'll start installing those cameras. The traffic study, I, to be honest, I don't really think about that. Have we recently done that or how often do you guys do them?
Usually a commercial of that size doesn't require, it's a store, so it's just based on conventional. I know the engineer here, record is here to explain. Melton and Hunt.
Oh, sure. That'd be great. Oh, there you are. Step to the podium, please. Welcome, sir. So traffic studies on that road versus a cage. I mean, is it?
Well, of course, like, like you say, we're on Cage Boulevard and that's where our majority of our traffic is going to come from and go and leave. We, we do have one access coming off of more. And, and you know, we could do something to discourage that, but as you know, I mean, in a facility like this, circulation is important. So we're also going to be trying to keep-
Yeah, but that's going to be a problem because we have school buses. We have other people that, I mean, it's a neighborhood. And I, I can tell right now, that's going to be, you guys, I'm just trying to be nice with you. You guys got to talk to the owners. I'm not going to tell the owner what to put there. That's their property. I don't want anybody telling me what to do with my property. It's, it's American. We could sell and do whatever we want, but I, I respectfully request, you better talk to them and tell them that if they're thinking they're going to be booting semis on Moore Road, that's not going to happen. So please make sure it's very clear in their head before they start spending too much money and then they back out.
Right. Yeah, we can do that. And I think we could also still have the access, but limited to, you know, cars type thing. So.
I was going to ask you, how much furniture do you have on Moore Road?
Frontage?
Frontage.
It's kind of too small. I can't read it too well. I'm going to say it's about three hundred and fifty feet.
Three hundred and fifty feet. So can we agree that anything within two hundred feet of that intersection, you can do right in, right out? Are you limited to residential traffic? On Moore Road?
I think we could, you know, the, from the, where the gas stations are and where the building is, there's a drive there, which is about that two hundred feet. And so we could eliminate that other drive that we have a little bit further. Which would encourage the traffic to use, you know, that, that access. So.
Yeah, where they come in right and leave out right, have to be staggering to go left and make a left turn and causing congestion on Moore Road.
I think we'd work with that.
Yeah, because we don't, we don't want to discourage development, but I'm telling you, they're going to get cited or stopped by the cops because the police department, sorry. Because it's not going to, it's not going to be allowed. We have people walking. You're going to have a hiking bike trail that we're designing. And it's just, it's just going to be too dangerous for them. Cage is huge. They can go east, I mean, north or south, get in and out any way they want. Make a turnaround on, what is it, Tallina Drive, if they want to go back north. I mean, it's no difference to me, but I'm just saying that's, we're just letting you know upfront. So no misunderstandings.
We can work with staff on that. I think we can work with something that works.
And as far as the noise, I can't do anything about the noise. People have old cars, they pop and people speed. I, we're trying to fix all that.
And we could do some, some things with landscaping, you know, and help muffle, but so we can look at that.
Yeah, some shrubs. You'd have the lights coming in and stuff like that. Work on that. It's on the order.
Also, we have a Chief Harvey here to help us out. So as that development, if it comes to fruition, Chief, I would imagine you should be able to put a, like you guys put those towers or a vehicle there or something, because it is going to be human, a lot of human trafficking there. People walking, especially when the hiking bike and everything is done. People walking around with their kids or just going out with their grandparents. And so we want to be sure that it gets enforced, that we're not, we're not just telling people, yes, it's, we're going to try. The police department is right next door, so there's no reason why you guys can't do that.
And Mayor, we absolutely will. Skywatch Towers, we're getting some motorcycles here very, you know, very soon, that those are going to help us with those kinds of complaints. And yeah, you will see a high visibility on Moore Road because I know that, that's a big thing. And so I hear about it quite a bit.
Yeah, we don't want to, at least I don't, on either side, east or west, Moore Road. That's not what it's intended for. That's what, that's what Cage is for in Jackson and I Road. Once we build the freeway, I B T C, it'll be a moot point. Thank you.
Melded anybody else? Thank you. Anybody sign up for public hearing? Item number three? None? All right, city manager reports, mayor commissioners, I got a couple of reports for you today. Sales tax, sales tax is up to record highs of, like Victor said previously, forty-eight point five eight percent year to date. But the true growth, true new growth is twenty-three point four one percent, which is still phenomenal. So we're doing great. Property tax collection report made twenty twenty-one. All the property tax collections are on sale, I mean, on, on track. Everything right now is pretty much the liquid tax, picking it up. We're already over the tax season. So, so we're in a, in a regular mode right now. Also, a couple of other things I have for you, the city's credit rating, we just threw, went through our credit rating from, from the agencies. We were at a double A minus and thank God and good management. Financial manager from the commission and staff, we stayed at a double A minus. That's giving that we've issued over a hundred million dollars in debt and we are ready to issue some more for broadband and some more for the twin span, span bridge. So given the debt that we issued and they still maintain that rating, it is very, very good for the city. We did excellent.
That's great.
Along those same lines, as far as fiscal management, the city far, we did get awarded the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. The finance department applied for it. You'll see it up on the screen. We got that award last year. Of course, it barely came in. And also, we did get a second award this year. In addition, the certification recognition for budget presentation has been awarded to Carla as an individual for managing the city's finances and being our finance director. So congratulations, Carla.
Congratulations. Yeah.
But wait, there's more. On June fifteenth, Kenneth, Kenneth, where you at? Kenneth, in this square. He's our interim Public Safety Communications Director. You know, Danny was the director of the startup that department. He's since moved on to EMS, which I think is happy over there. So Kenneth's been picking up slack. He's been doing very well. Also, Kenneth was just sworn in. He's now part of the Texas NINA. That's the National Emergency Number Association. He's a southern regional coordinator. He covers twenty-seven counties and represents telecommunications, telecommunications officers in all those counties. He's also responsible for training, the need in the staff for, for regular training, for facilitating career development, organizing, organizing regional trainings and promote membership. He was just sworn in last Wednesday?
The fifteenth.
The fifteenth, yes, Wednesday, the fifteenth. So he's the one representative we have here for twenty-seven counties and he's from Fars. Congratulations.
How's the, how's the EMS service?
It's very busy, extremely busy. Yes.
Yeah.
But very, very rewarding.
Sure. Yes. Do you happen to know what the average time is in, in that county for EMS response?
The actual response time, I do not have those numbers available to me right now.
Danny here? Oh, there you are. Sorry to see you over there. What is the average, average time for EMS?
So it just, it depends on the, the city, whatever contract the city has. So some of them have eight minutes ninety percent of the time. Some of them have twenty minutes ninety percent of the time. So it just depends on, on which city and what contract they have.
Can I ask this, Mayor? So we, we always want to set standards. So what is our mandated response time?
So we're currently responding to, at, at Fars. So we have several service areas. So Fars, and Fars is eight minutes, ninety percent of the time. And we're, we're meeting that without a problem.
Great. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Kenneth.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everybody.
Congratulations.
Yes, sir. Now we're, we're talking about EMS. I wanted to tell the commission, we did add a third truck to precinct three, which is the western part of the county. And we are growing. We are getting negotiations with other cities and hospitals to provide services. But I just want to give you all this number. So as of right now, we got nine full-time trucks in service, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And we cover six hundred and twenty-three square miles of the county.
That's a lot.
So the whole county is fifteen hundred square miles. We cover six hundred and twenty-three of those, the nine trucks. We took on a big task. We're doing good. We're doing real good.
Good.
Public safety stuff. Also, the Fars Police Department is getting ready to kick off their mounted police, their horse patrol. They're finishing training up. Horses are getting ready to run and they're going to debut at our Fourth of July Festival coming up. Fourth of July?
Nice.
Be at Jones Box Park. That's the next slide that should be coming up. We want to announce this will be our last meeting before Fourth of July. Fourth of July Festival is on Fourth of July on Sunday. We invite everybody to go, five to nine P M. It's going to be at Jones Box Park. What's the address, Senator? Twelve oh one, twelve oh one West Cross Lane. We'll be out there, food, music, rides, everything. So enjoy. Come on out. The next thing is, last year, through the budget process, y'all allowed us to buy a new fire truck. Or correction, a new rescue truck. This is our first new rescue truck since nineteen ninety-three. And when we have has been that old, it's gone through several chassis. The box is that old. But it's ready to go in service. Should be here by the end of the week, chief. So hopefully next week we'll get it in service and we'll have a little dedication ceremony, but it is a, it is a beautiful, expensive piece of equipment. It's far, that's what we needed. So thank you. We'll get there. We'll get there.
That was the first question. Okay. Second question I have is, for us that don't know your world, I don't understand the difference between, I thought they're all rescue trucks and fire trucks, but I guess not. What is, what is this for?
So just to give the commission a little more, so this truck carries no water. Traditionally, a fire truck carries water. This truck carries no water. This is all rescue equipment. So when this truck leaves out of central and it covers all the city, a fire truck goes in accident and the rescue truck goes in accident. They won't go.
It's got the jaws of life and all of this.
And then the EMS.
EMS goes with you, sir.
Okay. Thank you for clarification.
Thank you, chief. Now that we're talking about chief, after how many years, chief? Thirty-five?
Thirty-six, still over thirty-six years in the fire service.
Thirty-six years of public service. Chief Pettis has decided to enjoy his next chapter and retire. Hopefully for retirement, because he already retired once. Enjoy it while you still can. So his last day of service with the city of far will be July twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third. So congratulations, chief.
Thank you, sir.
I guess that honeydew list got a little too long the first time, huh?
Isn't he too young to retire?
He's not as young as he looks.
I'm older than him.
Congratulations. Enjoy your, your quality time. You've done a great job. We've, we're certainly going to miss you. You know, it's big shoes to fill, but we'll figure it out and we wish you nothing but the best for you and your family.
Last thing up, Mario, one up. So the chamber just has a new announcement to come out. Come on up.
Thank you so much, honorable mayor and city commissioners. I'm going to ask for my fellow board members from the Greater Far Chamber of Commerce to join me. Ms. Sonia Falcon, Mr. Ernesto Pulveda, Mr. Johnny Rodriguez. And we just have a special announcement. We, first of all, would like to start off by thanking you, each and every one of you all for giving us the ability to not only participate on this board, but also to continue to provide that support that is needed for this growing economy. Without that, we wouldn't be able to make sure that as businesses come in, that we won't be able to retain it. I, I want to make sure that we take this time to announce our new president of the Greater Far Chamber of Commerce. Allow her to say a few words, but also to just make sure that we acknowledge our board members and everything they do to bring forth, making sure that our businesses are being provided with information and awareness of what's going on. So thank you so much. I present to you our new president of Greater Far Chamber of Commerce, Marcela Vaez.
Thank you, Maria. Thank you. Yeah, I'm just very appreciative of this opportunity. I'm very happy that the board has entrusted me with leading the organization. It's a great organization and we're, we're committed to fulfilling the mission of fostering economic growth and providing relevant services to all of our businesses here in the community.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You have a lot of brain power behind you, a lot of brain power, which is great, a lot of experience as well. Use them wisely, you know, learn from them. And we look for exciting things coming from you.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, mayor commissioners, thank you. That's all the reports I have. We go to consent agenda. Next, the consent agenda, all routine. You can act the one motion, so you two choose.
And a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to executive mayor.
Yeah.
And according to section five five one point zero seven one through five five one point zero eight seven of the Texas government code, the Fars Board of Commissioners hereby gives notice that it is convenient to executive session to discuss items listed in the public portion of the meeting agenda. The time now is four twenty-six.
Our findings that were minor have been out on the internet by some groups. They're minor findings, just policies and procedures related to our P card and how we use it. Staff has instructed P car to use them because we get points. So we're doing a lot of purchases on them, especially with COVID. There was a lot of emergency purchases we had to do. There's nothing wrong with it. Everything's fine. This just bridges a gap and gets the, the audit back on track. So we amended the procedure manual to be more aligned what we're doing daily. So that was recommended approval.
Second. And a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes.
Is that going to be approved on the first reading or? No, sir. It'll be three readings.
Okay.
It's only the first reading. Seven, six, consideration action, defending a resolution authorized the city afar to enter to the agreement with Texas Department of Transportation to close state roadways for public events. Yes, mayor commissioners, for all our events, Hub Fest, Fourth of July, so on and so forth. We usually come with you for every event to get a resolution. This year, we changed it up. We're putting all the events in one resolution. So we don't have to come one time.
Right. For approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven, D, consideration action, if any ordinance or many ordinance. Oh, twenty twenty dash thirty-five for budget amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. Yes, sir. This one is adoption in the first reading. We're taking advantage of some of the changes we had, which is our good sales tax growth, property growth and bridge revenues. We had some personnel changes. We opened the deli. We had to add some more people there, finishing up hiring some EMS. So we took over some additional areas. We are getting ready for wifi. So we hired a couple of techs for that or going to hire some couple of techs for that. That's personnel wise, the big gulp of it. As far as staff and the materials, due to the rain, our streets have taken a pretty, pretty big hit. We're over about a hundred fifty thousand dollars in street materials. So we want to make that whole.
Right.
So that was recommended approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight, A, consideration action, if any authorized city manager to negotiate an entry to a contract or correction agreement to purchase property located three oh five South Cage Boulevard, the amount of eighty-three thousand, one hundred sixty-two dollars. Yes, sir. The sad to say, but the F O E, the Fraternal Order of Eagles Building is shutting down. From what I understand, some of their members are up in age and not showing up anymore. They were, they were showing up or not. They're kind of dying out breed. They are asking for people to buy the building. That's the last piece we need to redevelop that block. We won't, we bought everything else in that block. The eighty-three thousand dollars, one hundred sixty-two dollars is appraised value at the appraisal district. It's not market value. So there's no reason for us to do a, for approval. I mean, uh.
Any discussion?
Appraisal.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Nine, A, consideration action, if any authorized city manager to awards construction contract for Havillier Drive Monument signs. Yes, sir. So back on, on these signs, there's four signs. Staff wants to, the authority renegotiate with the awarding bid to go down to two signs for four.
Vote for approval. Second.
And a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Thank you.
Nine, B, consideration action, if any authorized city manager to negotiate and enter to a contract with P W E Productions LLC for the performance of the spasmetics on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one for the city far's New Year's event. Yes, mayor commissioners, this is the first year we're having a New Year's event. We've always stopped our, our festivals at Christmas. We are planning on a big ball drop champagne for those who qualify and want to have spasmetics there. So this is the contract for that.
Approve.
Second.
And a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Nine, C, consideration action, defending a water supply contract for the purchase and delivery of mid-grade unleaded gasoline and low sulfur diesel to Gold Star Petroleum out of Spring, Texas for items one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten. Yes, sir. Gold Springs was a low bidder for our gasoline and diesel contracts. That was recommended approval.
And a discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
How did you get a price of two twenty-eight for diesel? That's pretty good price.
Yeah, that's what they've been on.
How much? They get it twenty-eight? Twenty-eight?
Probably they get it in bulk, I guess. That's cheap.
Uh, no.
Can I?
Oh, you can't fill a truck. You can't bring your truck.
Right, right now, right now, the cheapest thing is two seventy-nine, man.
No, the lowest is three dollars and fourteen cents a gallon.
That's where you should've gone green and bought a Tesla.
Oh, man, it's a good deal.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, they pass this, thank you.
Move for a German.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.